Meeting please come to order, which please stand for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in our nation under God, in thy name, the justice of our world.
Okay, next is roll call.
Honorable Mayor Lindell?
I'm here.
Councilmember Jeff Morford?
Here.
Councilmember Doug Sashow?
Here.
Councilmember John Caper?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Garcia?
He's absent tonight. He's on vacation. He's up in our 49th state. So I don't think he's gonna vote.
Okay. Councilmember Lauren Boyet?
He's at about Wiggins coming here as fast as he can, so he'll be a little late.
Councilmember James Parks?
Here.
There's another Lauren. That'll work. Okay, next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Anybody here who'd like to speak? Will you come up? Please sign in to the right of the podium.
In a minute, yeah.
Hi, I'm Dominic Breton. I'm a member of the Rocky Mountain District Kiwanis. I'm here in Fort Morgan for my third time. I've been here since Monday, and we have built a lot of community interest. Do you guys know what a Kiwanis Club is? So we are an international organization. We've been out of your community for 14 years. We are made up of 79 clubs, a little under 2,000 members. Our primary focus is supporting the schools and supporting the other nonprofits. We are setting up meetings with anybody in the community that wants to learn more. We're looking at getting 20 members. Tomorrow night is our organizational meeting. We're having it at the ice cream shop. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Is it at 5:30?
It's at 5:30.
Okay, that's what it says here, but I just wanna make sure.
Is that the only question?
I think, tell us a little bit about how you are about kids.
Okay, so we have a service leadership program that is catered to the schools. So we have a high school leadership program called Key Club. Key Club is 100 years, been around for 100 years. It's the largest youth service organization in the world. Builders Club is designed for middle school age students. K Kids is elementary. So it gives kids opportunities to learn to be community service minded and to help the community, whether it's food drives, helping the homeless, clean up parks, just getting them to be service minded to help the community. And then we have a program called Action Club for adults with disabilities. And then we have a thing called CKI, and that's the college level leadership. Just trying to create a better tomorrow for our communities.
All right. Any other questions? I guess we don't interact, so, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
You can sign in.
Anybody else wish to speak to council tonight? All right, next is council acting as the local licensing authority.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just the formal acceptance of the application itself for Victor Sushi 3. They have a location in Brush and in Pagosa Springs as well. They are applying for a hotel restaurant liquor license. We received their paperwork on September 2nd. The application and all of their documents have been reviewed by the city clerk's office, the police department, and the city attorney's office. And it has been deemed complete, and the applicant has paid the appropriate concurrent fee. We are asking to formally accept the application and set a, or schedule a public hearing for October 21st.
All right, do we do this by a motion or a resolution?
It's by a resolution.
Pardon me?
By a resolution.
All right. Any discussion or comments? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution accepting the application for new hotel and restaurant liquor license for Victor Sushi's 3 LLC at 119 West Beaver Avenue. Schedule a public hearing for October 21st, 25.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by John Caper, vote by roll call.
That resolution passes unanimously.
All right, next is presentation possible action on a resolution authorizing the sale of vacant land property that is an abandoned well site. Mr. Linton?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight I have for you a resolution of an abandoned well site. In your packet, you had the purchase agreement, a couple of pictures identifying the location, as well as a survey. This here sits on the south side of All About the Smoke. It's basically their park, so it comes 25 foot off the building and 135 running east west. So I spent some time with the Ditters and the Fishers, and they're willing to buy the site. So I'm asked for a resolution authorizing the sale of that certain vacant real property that is the abandoned well site.
All righty, are there any questions or comments?
I was just gonna point out that the city actually owns a larger piece through there. We retained 25 feet for our utilities and trash truck service and things like that. We sold off enough that they could have the required parking that they currently use, and so, but we maintain a portion of that we need for what we've been doing, so. Just to clarify that, and this is all part of the direction that we had in executive session on sales, and so this is compliant with that conversation.
This is my real estate learning process.
All right. In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'll make a resolution to approve the transaction sale to Ditters, the abandoned property. I'm looking for the address, but I don't see it on my paperwork.
It's like 617 Main, I think.
Yes, it's 617 Main.
617 Main?
All right. Is that a second when I was talking? Okay. All right, so I have a resolution by John Caper, a second by James Parks. All those vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All righty. Next is presentation possible action on a resolution authorizing the sale of certain real property with Jensen Farms Minor Subdivision and approving a development agreement. Mr. Nation?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor and council. What you have in front of you tonight is several documents that are associated with the executive session that we had two weeks ago. This is looking at the sale of basically the corner of Barlow Road and Riverview Avenue. What is, a lot of us know is the Jensen Onion Property is currently now being used by Colorado Cold Connect as they wait for their new building to get open, so they'll be in there a short time longer. But this is a project that I think is exciting. It's additional retail development for the city of Fort Morgan on the little over four acres on the corner. And so tonight you have two things that we're asking for resolution on to allow the mayor to sign. The first one is the contract to actually buy and sell the real estate. That'll be the document that we're looking to get approval to sign and get moving forward. Then there's also a development agreement that is associated with this. Since the developer asked for a reduction in the price of the land, we requested a development agreement to go along with that. The development agreement basically gets held until they get through their diligence period associated with the sale and transaction of the property. So the resolution allows for the mayor to sign the contract to buy and sell tonight, and then the development agreement would be signed once the diligence period has been reached and the developer feels comfortable in moving the project forward. So I, there, we worked out all the details on this. The actual document being signed tonight did have some minor modifications compared to what was in your packet, but they were all minor legal jargon down in the force majeure sections of the contract. They had nothing to do with the sale of the property or any of the other terms that we discussed in executive session, so everything is good there. There were just some minor legal things that the attorneys were loving to be attorneys for the last, you know, 24 hours, and so, but we got those all worked out and had that language updated. That'll be in the actual documents to be signed. So with that, I know the developers are here tonight. These are the ones that you met with two weeks ago. But at this point, yeah, we're looking for adoption of this resolution, and I'd be happy to answer your questions, or if you have any questions for Bobby and Robert.
All right, any questions? Comments? Okay, in that case, I'd accept a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution 2593 for the authorizing sale of certain property, Jensen Farms Minor Subdivision Lot Number 3, and also approving a development agreement for said property.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by John Caper, a second by Jim Parks, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty.
Thank you for that.
Next is-
We look forward to having that developed. Thank you.
Yes, we do appreciate it. All right, next is presentation possible action on a resolution updating the signatures for city-held bank accounts. Ms. Edson?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So the banking resolution that you guys have looks very similar to the last one you have. The only difference is if you go down to Section 6, you will see that Bank of Colorado is listed under those bank accounts. So this is what we talked about last week with approving them to be our main operating account for accounts payable. I am leaving Wells Fargo on the banking resolution as of now because I think it'll, we're gonna have a transition time as we get everybody who's sending us ACHs and everything to switch to the new bank. So in the interim, we're gonna have both banks listed on the, on the resolution, but we will be switching from Wells Fargo over to the Bank of Colorado on that Section 6 on the resolution. Any questions?
All right. Any questions or answers? In that case, I'd accept a resolution.
Your Honor, I make a resolution number 2594 for approving the signatures for the operation of city-held bank accounts as noted.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by John Caper, a second by James Parks, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty. Next is, on the agenda is ordinance number 1317, an ordinance rezoning the Bijou subdivision. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments on, to the issues before city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, of which an additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment. That is inappropriate. Under these guidelines are otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit during the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in the lie of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First, the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on September 3rd.
Next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request by the applicant to rezone the Bijou subdivision from R2 to PUD. Originally, when it was zoned back in 2015, it was zoned R2, which allowed single families and duplexes. However, the duplexes could not be sold individually. This rezoning to PUD will follow very much the R2 zoning with some modifications aligned for a smaller lot size and to be able to sell individual duplexes on some of the lots. Staff has reviewed everything. We're happy with what the applicant has presented, and he is here if you've got any questions.
All righty. Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? If there's not anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, there were none.
Well now proceed to council discussion. Any questions from the council? If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
So I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Jeff Morford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All righty. Ms. Roenberg, council action.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Having heard the properly noticed public hearing, council should make a resolution to either approve, approve with conditions, or deny ordinance number 1317 rezoning the Bijou subdivision from R2 medium-density residential to planned unit development.
All righty. In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution on ordinance 1317 rezoning the Bijou subdivision from R2 medium-density residential to planned unit development, PUD, and authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by James Parks, a second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All righty. Next is, 1317, there we go. Next on the agenda for the public hearing on ordinance number 1318, an ordinance amending Riverview Commons, PUD. Again, all my previous comments about being a public hearing is applicable. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, was this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on September 3rd.
Okay, next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker.
Good evening again. This is a, really what I would consider cleaning up the current PUD and making a few changes. In your packet was a redlined version and a clean version of the ordinance. Basically, what we're doing is they've got a new ownership name. It's the same people, but they've changed, updated the name. And also, we're wanting to clean up a few things in relation to the building itself. When they originally entered the PUD, the entrance for the crawl space was gonna be on the outside and it only allowed one electrical outlet. They are now currently working with the builder that wants to build smaller stick-built homes, and he has proposed considering putting the heating and HVAC and the hot water heater in the basement, which would require more electrical outlets. And also, in practice, over time, the entrance for the crawl space has migrated to inside the home instead of being accessed from the outside. And then we've also updated the landscaping requirement to be reviewed by staff and still need to bring it back to city council. Those were the major changes. Also, between the last ordinance and this ordinance, we have also added all the other items in the original ordinance back into the ordinance that are still applicable. And with that, the applicant is here, and I can answer questions as well.
Okay, well next we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? All right, is there anyone else? Excuse us, since there's nobody else in the public who wishes to speak on this, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, Your Honor, there were none.
Well now proceed to council discussion. Any discussion or questions? If there's no further discussion from council, I'd entertain a motion to close this hearing.
Motion to close. Second.
So, a second by Jeff Morford, a second by Jim Parks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Voice, same sign? All right. Next is council action. Ms. Roenberg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, having heard the properly noticed public hearing, council shall make a resolution to either approve, approve with conditions, or deny ordinance number 1318, an ordinance amending the planned unit development created in ordinance number 971 of the city of Fort Morgan.
All right, so I'd entertain a resolution on ordinance number 1318.
I'd offer a resolution to approve ordinance number 1318, PUD amended for Riverview Commons as presented.
Second.
All right, so I have a resolution by Jeff Morford, a second by Jim Parks, all those, excuse me, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is, on the agenda is the 2026 budget calendar. Ms. Edson, Mr. Nation?
Okay, I'll go ahead and wait for Casey to come up. The, we got two things for you tonight. We have a list of changes that have occurred as we've gone through the budget process, and Casey will take you through those things. These are line items that were either missed, or we had wrong numbers, or something like that. And then we will also go through the schedule of fees, and that'll wrap up all of our presentations. So Casey, I'll go ahead and let you discuss the changes we had.
All right, so just a handful of changes. I'll just go through them one by one. We added a whole nother line item in the Parks, the Parks budget called maintenance of playgrounds. We had some, SIRSa came through and did not it, and there's just been some discussion, and we know that there's potentially gonna be some pretty sizable repairs that are gonna be made, need to be made to some playgrounds to keep them in compliance. So we just wanted to add some money for those ahead of time to make sure that we stay in compliance with that. We are taking strictly for streets. It was, we originally budgeted 3 million. We're gonna go up to 3.5 million. A little bit later on down, you will see a stormwater project while we're anticipating that there's gonna be some repairs that need to be done to some, some state highways in, to go with that stormwater project, so we're adding money to strictly for streets to take care of those roadways that are needing to be done as part of that project. Next up is debt service payments and interest expense on the water fund. As I looked through the amortization schedule, I just adjusted to make those a little bit more accurate. So I changed those, those numbers. And then also in the water fund, the NISP payment for next year is actually gonna be lower than anticipated, than we originally thought, so Brent's gotten some updated numbers from, on NISP, and we are bringing that budget down to 3 million. The next several lines are on the sewer budget. We are asking several of those departments to hold back on some of our capital spending for the next couple of years while we're ramping up and working on the wastewater treatment project. We wanna make sure that we have enough money in reserves to meet bond covenants and, and be prepared for that big project. So they, the departments agreed that they thought these, these items could hold off for a couple, for a year or so till, till we get that, those bonds underway. And then we have the storm, stormwater sewer project, which I believe is main and insign. Is that correct, Brent?
Yeah.
Yeah. So those, we budgeted two years ago, I believe, and we've been carrying it forward. I just wanted to be clear that it's still gonna be carried forward. We finally got approval from CDOT, which we've been waiting on, so we're gonna be moving forward with that project next year. The next one is the sanitation budget. We had included in the five-year CIP, and then additionally, when we did our, our rate study, we'd included a building for the trucks. So they're asking to build a building to keep all of the trash trucks in that's separate from the building they're in right now, so that's what that's for. And then down at the bottom, there were several adjustments to all the, basically all funds, all accounts, so salary and wages. We ended up going with a 1.5% COLA increase. Brent had originally presented that we would present up to a 3% increase depending on how sales taxes were coming in. We're still looking, we are in a decrease year over year on sales tax. So we're trying to still keep the employees as whole as we can, but without going into a deficit in the budget. And then I adjusted medical charges, so basically, our hub, our administrator for, for the medical, gives us a per employee, per month cost that they estimate that we'll be paying out for employees, and so I adjusted that, and we charged it back to the departments. So that's what I went through and adjusted all of those. And then the admin allocation, so several, several budgets kind of pay for administrative type roles like finance, HR, those sorts of things, get charged back to the departments. So those are all taken into account. And then you guys will see the full budget at the next council meeting. You'll have all the pages of every single line item you can dig into, and we'll have the full ordinance ready to approve next, next council meeting. So is there any questions on any of those lines?
So, yes ma'am, the 1.5 COLA, is that set, or is that just a line item for placekeeper?
That's a line item, but it's, it's a number that we as staff feel that we can still manage and keep the budget balanced without having to pull out of reserves or anything to make that work.
Just one clarification?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you give a little bit more clarification? I'm a little confused on how the strictly for streets money is going into stormwater project? Is that, am I reading that correct, or?
Yeah, so that project is broken down, our engineering estimates have the actual costs to the, the infrastructure that's in the ground, but then they broke out what the repaving costs were going to be for the project. And so, in this case, it's, the beneficiary is the streets, and it's state streets that are owned by the state of Colorado. They should be paving those anyway, but we will have to fix these as part of the project. So in order to balance out some of the effect that we're feeling in the sewer fund next year, because of the work, 'cause the storm sewer comes out of the actual sewer fund, we wanted to go ahead and pull the street portion of the improvement that'll be done out of strictly for streets and not hit the sewer fund that we're already stressing greatly as it is, but still getting this project done that should have been done two years ago.
I guess I'm still a little confused. If it's strictly for streets, how can we?
Because it is a, an improvement to the road surface.
Due to the sewer, though.
Yeah, it's due to the sewer, but we, we-
Should it come out of the sewer fund, or?
The, the streets projects that we're getting ready to do in the next two months, we're paying for the asphalt and the repair to the streets out of strictly for streets, but the reason we're tearing the street up is for water line replacement. This is, it's, we, we do this depending on how, yeah, the funds look like they need to work, so.
And I will just point out, we increased the amount that we're spending, so we were gonna only spend 3 million, and we added to that amount. So we were, we're still gonna do all of the road repairs that we were gonna do in the first place, and now we're adding this extra portion of road repair.
Is that what you're adding coming out of the 1% sales tax for strictly for streets?
Yes. Yep. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we'll jump into schedule of fees.
I would just say on that, that I think anybody in that neighborhood would probably be happy about improving that drainage and-
It's been bad.
Streets are part of it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. I don't, I, the schedule of fees that were presented, you guys only got the pages that had changes on them, 'cause the document is so long, we didn't wanna get it confused by adding the entire schedule of fees, and it's a redlined version, so the changes are clearly visible. I'm not gonna speak to all the changes. I will speak to my department, which only had one small change, and then we'll have the other directors come up and speak to their departments. So my only change was for utility billing, and we had previously charged a $15 charge just to be on the shut-off list, so if you paid your bill late and you were on the list and we were watching you to potentially turn you off, we charged a fee. And I think historically, it was because it would, took a long time to maintain that, and there were so many people on the list, but there's a lot of efficiencies that we found, and I just don't think there's a need to charge that fee anymore, so we're just getting rid of that $15 fee. All right.
Okay. The other ones that I'll just hit on that were kinda clerical things that didn't get adjusted last year is there's an additional fee that's now being collected in the clerk's office- is there's an additional fee that's now being collected in the clerk's office that you'll see. And then, when you dig further into this, you'll see that there's a, just a couple of additional fees that were changed in the planning and zoning department with our building department. Those were things that we had needed to change last year and didn't get them in with the change. And so, they're, they're asking for those to be changed on those. Those were very minor. The next ones that I'll have Matt come up and talk. He'll hit on all the rec department changes, 'cause there's some extensive changes being requested in that one. So, I'll have Matt walk through what the thought process is on the changes for his departments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, Brent kinda gave away the big reveal. I won't go line by line through these unless there's questions on specific ones. I'm happy to answer. You'll notice we pretty much have adjustments across the board in the golf and recreation operations. A lot of this has to do with, number one, we have not done an adjustment to any of these programming or fees since 2017. Going on nine years, I think we can all agree that the world's gotten quite expensive, and the council and city has also invested heavily in these operations over the course of the last nine years. So, going into this past year, department heads were tasked with reaching out to other facilities somewhere in size, somewhere of needs, seeing where we could go, wanting to make an impact, but also to not basically destroy users and affect play and stuff. And the numbers you have before you are what they came up with as their recommendations for just that. I'm happy to answer any questions specifically off of those. But as you will see, these recommended changes are through recreation rentals as well as golf operations.
Well, I, I believe like a golf course, we had that discussion with the advisory board of recognizing residents versus out of county. What's that? What are we gonna use for residency? A county resident, or?
Yes, uh, the decision for now is the non-county resident. That's where you see the 1,200, I believe it's 1,200, 1,700 with a cart, annual pass. Not heavily used, but if someone does want to. What you'll see is a real emphasis, too, on weekends. You'll notice Monday through Friday, daily play isn't affected. Truth be told, a lot of those are annual pass holders anyway. But the weekends, Friday through Sunday, have gotten honestly ridiculous. I mean, we're doing that well. That's how many people are coming through those doors. So, that little bit of adjusted cost. I do wanna stress, this still puts us, this doesn't solve problems. This is us honestly being financially responsible, knowing that, you know what? Everything is costing us more. We've invested, we've grown the product, and we feel it would be irresponsible for us not to at least bring some sort of recommendation to pass through even the smallest cost. We will still be known as some of the cheapest golf this side of Denver, and at the same time, our recreation programming. It'll meet those needs, as well as we're working on hardship waiver options for any families who this might impact them, who wanna utilize our stuff. So, we are staying cognizant of the fact that, hey, this isn't perfect, but we also, too, have to run these a little bit more like businesses, and that's what you see before us, is our effort to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for Matt? If not, we'll have-
Thanks, Matt.
Doug come up one more time and talk about the fees at the wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Like Matt, I ain't gonna go through every line item. Basically, this is just a cost of doing business increase. The prices of this, the materials and supplies they need have gone up. So, this just reflects us being sustainable when we, uh, run the test for the communities that come in and we test for.
Okay, any questions for Doug? Okay, that wraps up the budget presentations. And like Casey indicated, at the next meeting, we will bring the full budget document to you on first reading, and then, we will follow that up on second reading, um, at the second meeting in October. Yep, thank you.
All righty. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent agenda items 11A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for August, and 11B, approval of the minutes of September 2nd, 2025 City Council regular meeting. I'm almost there, I'm sorry.
Okay, are there any comments, corrections, or additions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution accepting the consent agenda A and B.
Second.
All right, so have a resolution by Jim Parks, second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Ms. Curtis.
So, we're just about done with September meetings. September 25th is the Museum Heritage Foundation Board meeting at the Library Museum Community Room. October 7th is our next City Council regular meeting. October 8th is the Airport Advisory Board meeting at noon. October 9th is the Historic Preservation Board meeting at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. October 13th is the Planning Commission Board meeting at 4:30 here at City Hall. October 16th is the Golf Course Advisory Board meeting at the Quail Dunes Clubhouse at 4:30 PM.
All righty. Now, anything from staff? Do you got anything else, Mr. Nation?
Oh, yeah, we dropped off.
Kinda forgot that part.
Yeah, we dropped off announcements, so, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I was just going to make it public that our construction on Barlow Road is finally wrapping up. Thursday night, they will go in and sweep the center lines and everything and get all the striping put down. So, we have all the turn lanes painted on there. And then, Friday, that full section of Barlow that we've redone in concrete will be completely open. So, um, looking forward to finally getting that done and putting truck traffic back on that. And then, the only other thing is, is I know Tom wanted to introduce one of our new employees in his department, so if they would come up, I'll let them have a moment at the podium. You'll have enough time with me in executive session to ask questions.
I'd like to introduce Rocket Watkins. He's our new building official. Wanted you guys to be able to put a face to the name. He's picking up things really quick and having, uh, comprehensive building code services backing him up while he's getting his certifications will be great. But he's already busy and tackling things, and you'll probably see a few red cards around town. With that, I'll just see if he wants to say anything or if you've got any questions.
I've had some angry glares.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, welcome aboard. Good to have you. All right. Chief Sharp.
First of all, Your Honor, I'm recognizing a pattern here. Last month, Jill gave me two minutes. This month, she didn't give me any time on the agenda, so.
Sorry about that.
I can, I can take a hint.
Put it under announcements.
Just a couple things real quick. This last week, we finished up our five-year strategic plan meetings. I met with several different groups, as you know, over the last several months. Uh, we're gonna be work on, working on completing that strategic plan here over the next couple of months and be presenting that to you as well. Citizens Academy, last day to register for that is September 30th, begins October 7th. And again, it's a county-wide academy, so anybody from Brush, well, anybody in the county, but Brush, Morgan County, and the Fort Morgan Police Department will be putting this on. So, that starts October 7th. And then, the last thing is, you may have heard, we've done the Faith in Blue event a couple times over the years. So, what Faith in Blue actually is, is it's based on the premise that strong communities are built through mutual respect and understanding. Law enforcement and faith institutions are key pillars in each community, and when they work together, neighborhoods thrive. So, this year, we're working in the Faith in Blue, which is October 11th, and we're gonna do a 5K-ish run-walk. Um, so, everybody's invited. I say 5K-ish. We're gonna start it at the Harvest University, the old middle school, 300 Dual Street, and it's gonna just go through the neighborhood. It's not really, it's free. It's, it's more of a fun event for people to come together, bring the law enforcement community and the community at large together. There is no cost, but if people would like to get a shirt, they can order one at their own expense, and we'll have an event. So, hope to see all of you there and, and people in the public. That's all I have.
How many did you have signed up so far for the Citizens Academy?
Uh, I haven't checked since last week. There is around 10, I believe, so far.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Anything from legal?
Just happy to be here and see you guys.
Yeah, love to hear it. How about, anybody in the back have any announcements or anything? In that case, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session. One for, uh, purpose of negotiating, developing strife for negotiation for economic incentives, and another for development of personnel matters, specifically checking in with the city manager.
Your Honor, first, I just wanna apologize for being late. I try not to do that, so forgive me for coming in so late. Before we went into executive session, I did wanna just, um, take one minute to recognize earlier in the month our school teachers, the SRO officer, and some other school personnel at the middle school who were involved in a life-saving, um, actions for one of the students there, and just commend and recognize the daily, um, work that they do to keep kids safe while they're in school. And maybe we can have those folks in and do an official recognition sometime and-
For me.
And then, I'd offer an, uh, motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All right, all those. And this is an executive session, as I said, for two executive sessions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A voice, same sign. Meeting's adjourned.